I'm calling to the Order of the Wheat Ridge City Council Meeting October 11th, 2010. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please take role?
Karen Adams.
Here.
Joe Demott.
Here.
Karen Berry.
Here.
Joyce J.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Wanda Seng.
Here.
And Mike Stites.
Here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of September 27th, 2010?
I'll move.
Second.
There's a motion for approval seconded by Councilmember Stites. Any changes to the minutes? And we need one abstention. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero with one abstention by Councilmember Berry.
Thank you. We have several proclamations which I think will last longer than our entire meeting tonight, so I'll go down to the podium. I'd like to ask Mrs. Wheat Ridge to please come forward to read some of our proclamations as she always does. And Mrs. Wheat Ridge will be competing in the Mrs. Colorado 2011. Our first proclamation is the 2010 National Save for Retirement Week. Ask Patrick to please come forward and accept the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council, citizens of Wheat Ridge, good evening. To recognize National Save for Retirement Week 2010, whereas the cost of retirement continues to rise in the United States and the need for greater savings grows, and whereas many employees may not be aware of their retirement savings options, or may not be taking full advantage of their workplace-defined contribution plans to the full extent allowed by law, and whereas all workers, including public and private sector employees, employees of tax-exempt organizations, and self-employed individuals can benefit from increased awareness of the need to save for their retirement. Therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Jerry DeTulio and the Wheat Ridge City Council formally declares October 17th through the 23rd, 2010, to be National Save for Retirement Week in Wheat Ridge, Colorado, done and resolved this 11th day of October, 2010.
And even though this is Retirement Week, please save more than one week out of the year or so. Our next proclamation is Helping Kids Thrive Day. I'd ask David Goff, Jeanne Oliver, and Julie DeTulio, please come forth from Jefferson Center for Mental Health.
Helping Kids Thrive Day, October 21st, 2010. Whereas we recognize that children are our future and their healthy development is a top priority for parents and communities, and all adults play a critical role in supporting children and youth to grow in healthy, positive ways, be they parents, teachers, and other school staff, coaches, employers, clergy, and/or neighbors. And when children and youth experience the act of support and involvement from parents and other adults, they are less likely to engage in a wide range of high-risk behaviors and more likely to thrive. And whereas Helping Kids Thrive, a free conference that was started in 1990 by a coalition of community organizations who were concerned about the high incidence of youth suicide in Jefferson County, and the prevalence of other destructive behaviors such as drug and alcohol abuse, and youth violence, is celebrating its 20th anniversary. And whereas Helping Kids Thrive offers parents and other adults practical tools, skills, and resources that can help them meet the needs and maximize the potential of children as they develop from toddlers through adolescents within the family and the community. And whereas we recognize the original founders and this year's hosts and sponsors for this important community service, Jefferson Center for Mental Health, and sponsored by Jefferson County Education Association, Jefferson County PTA, and Jefferson County Schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Wheat Ridge Mayor and City Council do hereby proclaim October 21st, 2010, Helping Kids Thrive Day, and call upon all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our communities and resources to supporting and helping children and youth maximize their potential and thrive so they may become productive citizens of our community.
On behalf of Jefferson Center for Mental Health and our partners, I thank you so much for recognizing Helping Kids Thrive, started over 20 years ago. Julie is passing out some brochures. This year's conference is being held at Wheat Ridge High School, and it's on October 21st from 5:00 to 8:45 p.m. We have childcare and food available for the people who are attending, and I can tell you already, we have over 200 people registered, so we're really exciting. One of the things that I'm really excited about this year is we have a new class called From Cyberbullying to Texting, and that's been so much in the news lately, and so we'll have some tips for parents and adults on that topic, too. Thank you again so much. And from a personal note, can I say that I attended the ceremony on Saturday, the ribbon cutting and the dedication of Discovery Park, and I'd like to thank you all and the citizens of Wheat Ridge, or whoever else made it possible, because that's right in my neighborhood, and I love it. Thank you so much.
The next presentation we have tonight is the Savvy Award presentation. I'd like to ask Ken Johnstone to please come forward, Andre LaRue with the West Chamber, and Denise Stephens from Jefferson County Business Resource Center. Please step forward. I'm very excited to announce the city is recipient of two Savvy or First Place Awards through the 3CMA Association. Savvy Awards are part of the prestigious National Awards Program applicants are judged by peers for demonstrating best practices and excellence in government communications. As mayor, I'm honored that the city is being recognized as a leader in communications, and this is an example of just one of the many ways the city is getting our name out there and promoting the great things that are happening in the city and our community. The first award being the present presented this evening is the Savvy First Place Award for Business Education Series Training, the BEST Program, in the category of marketing and tools economic development. Here this evening to accept the awards are Ken Johnstone, our Community Development Director, Andre LaRue with West Chamber, and Denise Stephens from the Jefferson County Business Resource Center. The BEST Program as a countywide partnership includes municipal and nonprofit business specialists dedicated to providing high-quality education seminars and training sessions for the region's business community. These sessions are relevant, diverse, and affordable, and encourage successful growth in challenging business climate. The BEST Program was described by the judges as a creative and cost-effective program. Best was every panel's members' top pick. It leverages existing resources, eliminates duplication, services, saves dollars, and clearly has a measurable impact. We are impressed with the collaboration across agencies, key in this difficult economic times, and noted that cost to the city itself was minimal, almost nonexistent. Very well done. So please, I'd ask Mrs. Wheat Ridge to please give out the word tonight. I'd say a few words.
The West Chamber is taking over coordinating this program this year with Ryan's departure from the city, and I just, I want to say how impressed. I'm new to the Chamber and new to the BEST Program, and I am so impressed. I've spent 20 years in nonprofit and community-type work, and this is the first program I've ever seen where there is such a great collaboration of organizations from the city, the chambers, there's economic development, and all of the programs, the goal is to break even. We don't try to make a profit, and we try to keep them all free or low cost to everyone involved. So we look forward to 2011. We're in the planning stages, and I think it's going to be another great year.
Congratulations. For our second award tonight, it's the Hold Up Award. I'd ask, I don't like these glasses at all. You're laughing at me. I'd like to ask Police Chief Dan Brennan and Commander Jim Lorenz to please come forward. Our second award tonight is for the Hold Up Robbery Prevention Program in the TV and videos promotional video category, populations of 0 to 83,000 population. Here this evening to accept this award are Police Chief Dan Brennan and Commander Jim Lorenz. I would also like to thank Jesse Johnson, AKA Savvy Johnson, our Channel 8 videographer. This program is one of the PD's newest programs and is a unique program aimed at equipping business owners and managers with knowledge they need to help prevent robberies. The judge has called the Hold Up Robbery Prevention Program engaging, and it holds your attention. Very informative. This is a well-produced program with good shooting, editing, on-camera talent. It's no wonder that the hold-up was very successful. I hope there was no real shooting in there tonight. So I'm going to ask Mrs. Wheat Ridge to please present you
I just wanted to share with council, this program, this crime prevention program wasn't something that, you know, the chief dreamt up. This actually came from one of our detectives who works robberies as part of his job, and he noticed and observed when he was out there at a couple of robbery scenes that, you know, there were some things from environmental design, from a crime prevention perspective, that he felt we could do a better job in terms of educating, you know, the public. So working with other detectives and with Commander Lorenz, and then with Heather and Jesse, we were able to put together, I think, a pretty proactive and progressive marketing tool that has obvious benefits to our community. And we've done three training sessions, I believe, thus far with business owners in the community. It's been very, very well received by banks, by convenience stores, by other business owners. So it's just, I think, just another great example of the good work that our line-level employees and supervisors are doing in the city in terms of trying to enhance services, educate our citizens, and prevent crime. So thank you.
Our last presentation tonight, we have some police recognition awards. I'm going to ask Police Chief Dan Brennan to talk about those folks tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, I have two different citizen awards that I'd like to take the opportunity to present to you tonight. The first citizen award is to, will be presented to Pedro Munoz. Pedro, you want to come up? On May 26th of this year, Pedro arrived at the Family Dollar Store just as a shoplifting suspect was walking past him out the store with an employee in pursuit yelling at the suspect, the theft suspect, to stop. Pedro observed the suspect on foot. He was approached, while he was still in his vehicle, by the suspect, asking for a ride. The suspect had asked Pedro if he'd give him a ride out of the particular area. Pedro used a ruse to detain the suspects, saying that he would give him a ride. It was just going to take a little while until the police could respond. As a result, we were able to respond on scene and take this suspect into custody. Pedro, due to your cooperation in working with the police department and your actions, you have shown that you have the qualities highly recognized by the Wheat Ridge Police Department for citizen involvement and action, when you could have easily not gotten involved and just gone about your regular business. The police department would like to recognize you with a citizen award and the Wheat Ridge Police Department ceremonial coin for a job well done. Thank you. And then I've got several citizens for the next award. George and Jill Pratt, if you'll step forward. CSO Supervisor Mary McKenna. Angela Davis, if you're here. Jim Fisher and James Steele. And it looks like just the Prats are here. Oh, we got another one here. Okay. Come on up. Our community service supervisors submitted the citizen awards for these citizens, and I'm going to talk to you about a pretty horrific scenario that played out on I-70 back in July. On July 18th of this year, at approximately 9:30 p.m., Jim Fisher was traveling eastbound on I-70, taking the Ward Road exit ramp, when he observed the rear doors of a horse trailer swing open and a horse fall out onto the interstate. Imagine that. He parked his car and walked back up the highway to provide whatever assistance he could. Wheat Ridge officers were dispatched to respond to the accident involving the injured horse that had fallen out of the horse trailer upon impact, and with a second horse still remaining in the trailer. The community services supervisor was also requested to respond. Supervisor McKenna requested dispatch make several phone calls regarding the transportation and veterinary care for the horses. A tow truck driver, Mr. James Seals, came across the accident as he was traveling down the interstate, and he quickly stopped, turned on his overhead lights to stop traffic for the horse that was still in the roadway. He managed to tether the injured horse to the rear of his tow truck to keep the horse out of traffic. Mr. Seals and Mr. Fisher remained with the horse and kept it calm while the moving highway traffic went by. You can imagine that, can't you? And while officers handled the accident scene. CSO Supervisor McKenna arrived on scene to find the officers had closed down one eastbound lane on I-70. Within a short time, boarding facility owners Jill and George Pratt arrived to transport the horses. The situation was assessed, and it was decided that one horse still in the trailer could be moved to the Pratt's trailer, and attempt would be made to move the injured horse into the trailer as well. Now, this horse was severely injured. Officers shut down all eastbound traffic so that the animals could be moved safely. CSO Supervisor McKenna contacted Angela Davis, who was the center manager for the Table Mountain Animal Shelter, and asked her to contact a veterinarian. Oddly enough, Angela was also traveling eastbound on I-70, and she was able to stop and assist us. The one horse, the uninjured horse, was successfully loaded onto the trailer. When attempt was made to load the injured horse, injured horse onto the trailer, that horse spooked. The situation was reassessed, and it was decided that if the animal could not be loaded, it would have to be euthanized on the side of the highway due to its injuries. A second attempt was made with a police officer, the Prats, Mrs. Davis, and Mr. Seals literally pushing the injured horse onto the trailer. CSO Supervisor McKenna obtained authorization for veterinary care for the horse from the driver, who was later arrested, that had caused the accident, and followed the horse trailer to T-Mac and met with the veterinarian, Dr. Lear, from Golden Animal Hospital. Dr. Lear examined the injured horse and determined that the animal would need to be euthanized. The second horse was examined, found to be fine, and the Prats transported it to their facility to care for it. CSO Supervisor Mary McKenna kept in contact with the Prats daily for updates on the horse. This, as I explained earlier, was a very horrific and complex call in a dangerous location, and each of you went above and beyond what we'd expect of citizens in a very stressful situation. Due to your cooperation in working with the police department, your consideration for the safety of the injured animal, and your willingness to get involved, your actions have shown that you have the qualities highly recognized by the Wheat Ridge Police Department for citizen involvement and action. The department would like to recognize you with these citizen awards and the Wheat Ridge Police Department ceremonial coin, and I would like to salute you. Thank you.
I just want you to know that you have been blessed with some patrol people, animal control people here in Wheat Ridge. You should be very proud.
Once again, I wanted to thank Mrs. Wheat Ridge for reading the proclamations. I wanted to congratulate and thank our staff for the communication that they've created, especially Heather Guyer over the last few years with our Top of the Hour videos, and also Patrick Goff for supporting that effort with Jesse Johnson and our video camera crew. So thank you, and we'll continue on with the rest of our meeting. The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. Do we have anybody here to speak on any item not on the agenda? Please step forward, spell your last name for the record, and please state your address for your city.
Karen Thaler, T-H-A-L-E-R, 6161 West 29th Place, District 1. As Mayor DeTulio said earlier, I, this year, for the next coming year, 2011, I will be representing Wheat Ridge once again as a state finalist for Mrs. Colorado. I applied, and through my community efforts, was selected to represent the city once again, and absolutely thrilled, and as a native of Wheat Ridge, I just, words can't express what joy this brings to me to represent our city. And I will do my best to really bring it home this year and put Wheat Ridge on the map. I would also like to say that was a great, attending the park opening on Saturday, Discovery Park, and in addition to the celebration, my husband, Dave, and I celebrated our 11th anniversary, who's known as Mr. Wheat Ridge in my world. So, thank you very much. That's it.
Do we have anybody else for public comment tonight before we move on? Seeing none, move on to approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda tonight? Next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item one is Resolution 56-10. Councilmember Seng.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 56-2010, a resolution for the support of local administration of Colorado's human service system. The State of Colorado is considering the feasibility of doing away with the county administration of Colorado's social service system and moving these services under a state-controlled model of social service delivery. The Jefferson Board of County Commissioners passed a resolution to affirm their support for a locally administered human service system and to oppose a state-administered system. The board has asked the municipalities in Jefferson County to consider supporting a similar resolution and sharing the resolutions with them. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution number 56-2010, a resolution requesting support of the local administration of Colorado's human service system.
Is there a second? There's a motion for approval seconded by Councilmember J. Discussion on item one. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Please be sure you have your mics on, council. They were turned off when we started. Item two, Councilmember Reinhardt.
We're required under our rules to bring forward proposed changes to the council rules and present them prior to taking action. So tonight, we're going to present three potential rule changes to be acted on at the October 25th meeting. The proposed restriction on public, the first rule would be to restrict public testimony at council study sessions unless council decides to waive them at the study session. A proposal to select the mayor pro tem nominee by secret ballot and then elect by unanimous vote, and I believe the decision was, would be brought forward with a recommendation as opposed to requirement for unanimous support of the nominee and who was subsequently elected as mayor pro tem. And then finally, provision allowing council members the option to respond to citizen comment at the completion of the citizen comment period in the, in our regular meetings. That, I don't believe that there's any action to be taken tonight, but to introduce those proposed rule change for action on October 25th.
Discussion on the council rules.
Would there be objection to moving that to November 8th? Mr. Snow, what is the timeline that we need to do that mayor pro tem in the council rules? Do you have, do I need to?
Timeline to do the, to elect your mayor pro tem?
It's in here. I think it, if I remember correctly, it's November, it's like right after...
It actually says the first or second business meeting in November of each year. So, I don't have my calendar.
So the 25th, we could still do it on the 8th, is that correct? This is at a regular meeting?
Part of the intent would, part of the intent would be to have the council rules adjusted in time to follow the new procedure in the November meetings.
Okay, so the 25th is a study session, is that, no, it's a regular meeting.
You'll be having a regular, regular meeting on November 8th, and a second one on November 22nd. And as the rules state, in the first or second business meeting of November of each year, the council would nominate and elect and select their mayor pro tem. So obviously, you could make the decision on the 8th if you like.
And act the 22nd.
I mean, frankly, it seems as though you could make the decision on the 22nd and follow those rules right then as well, so.
That's true.
Okay. If there's no objection, I'd like to change it to the 8th of November for this item, please.
Anybody have a problem with moving the council rule change to November 8th?
No.
So that'll be accepted by unanimous consent? Anything else on item two before we move on to item three, Mr. Stites?
Yeah, on number two, we need to replace unanimous with majority.
Right, that was mentioned by Councilmember Reinhardt, that it would be...
I just want to make sure that it is in the record or whatever, that we take unanimous out and put majority.
Mr. Dogg, do you want to read what you had written for the council in the pre-meeting?
Sure, the, it would be on page six, letter B1. You'd delete the word unanimous, retain the word majority, and add a new sentence at the end of B1 that would read, "The council was encouraged to confirm the nomination unanimously."
Encouraged, right, yeah. Thank you. Ms. J.
Is there any necessity to add that whichever council member was interested in becoming mayor pro tem would make some sort of a statement before these nominations?
I honestly don't think so. I'm guessing that, you know, that's, that's going to be allowed as part of the nomination process, really. That's less, I don't think it's required in a rule. That will happen, it's just a matter of procedure.
Okay.
Any other comments on item two? Thank you. Item three is Councilmember Stites.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce motion to approve payment to Portable Computer Systems Incorporated in the amount of $37,559.50 for replacement of 10 patrol vehicle mobile data, data computers. The annual replacement of patrol vehicle mobile data, data computers is necessary, yeah, to ensure reliability and stay current with standard technologies. In 2009, the city did not replace any MDCs due to budget constraints. Now, this is a really a good one, and I enjoy reading this one, because this is great. $37,559.50 was approved in the 2010 IT budget. The full cost of the computers will be reimbursed to the city by the E-911 Authority Board this year. So this will cost us nothing. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve payment to Portable Computer Systems Incorporated in the amount of $37,559.50 for replacement of 10 patrol vehicle mobile data computers.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion for approval seconded by Councilmember Demott. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for tonight. We'll move on to city managers' matters.
I have nothing this evening.
City attorneys' matters?
Not tonight, thanks.
City clerks' matters.
Let's see, there's one thing, just a reminder to our voters, election time is coming up. If you elected or selected to have mail-in ballots, I'm told by the county that those are actually going to be delivered to the post office tomorrow, so you should start seeing those in your mailboxes very soon. There's plenty of places for you to get information on the ballot issues. The State Blue Book will highlight some of those. And as I learned this week, there is one, a pamphlet that has been distributed electronically by the League of Women Voters. They selected to cover issues 300 and 301 in the city of Wheatridge. I only found this out this week. They sent it to me electronically, so I've printed those out, and they're available in the city clerk's office. I can also get them to you electronically if you wish to have that. That's it.
Thank you. I wanted to thank the Wheatridge United Neighborhoods for hosting their candidate and issues forum this year. It was very well received. It'll be on Channel 8 through the election. Please watch Channel 8 for the agenda, and also our website has the on-demand video for the Wheatridge United Neighborhoods forum. So I want to thank the organizers of that group and all the candidates and issue folks that came and spoke. I also wanted to thank the, the group, The Bottom Feeders. They were the live band, that's the neighborhood band right next to Discovery Park that played Saturday. We had about 150 adults and about 50 children at the grand opening ribbon cutting of the Discovery Park and the sculpture. So I want to thank all the past and present elected officials who attended. We had a good time. Everybody was very impressed with the work that Parks Department has done. I want to thank Joyce and all of her staff for the work that's been done on the property over the last six months. Looks great, and I'm expecting a lot more in the future based on what we saw there on Saturday. So thanks to all the neighbors and citizens and elected officials and business owners that attended. And with that, I will move on to Councilmembers Sang.
Just echoing what you said.
Thank you. Councilmember Barry.
Yes, thank you. I want to remind everybody that the Wheatridge Farmers Market runs through October 28th, and there's still a lot of wonderful fresh produce for everyone to obtain, so please try to visit it its last two weeks. I want to read an email from someone concerning an article in Neighborhood Gazette. I did get a call about, a question about this particular article, and it was about the Gold Line, so I'd like to go ahead and read this. The article, this is addressed to Mr. Holzer. The September Neighborhood Gazette has an article on page three stating that the Wheatridge Station on the Gold Line likely will never happen, even if the Gold Line is built to the Arvada Registration. I don't know how you might have come to that conclusion, but it is completely untrue. The Wheatridge Station is included with the rest of the Gold Line in Phase Two of the Eagle project, and the federal funding, and if the federal funding we anticipate is awarded next year, when it is scheduled, the Wheatridge Station will indeed be constructed as an integral part of the Gold Line along with the rest of the corridor. There have never been any plans or suggestions to delete the Wheatridge Station on Ward Road. In addition, the completion date for the Gold Line, including Ward Road, is July 1st, Eagle P-3 not only funds the Gold Line to Arvada Ridge but all the way to Ward Road. Director Cohen's remark about waiting for the $1 billion federal grant refers not to the extension of the Gold Line from Arvada Ridge to Ward Road, but to the entire Gold Line and a segment of the Northwest Rail Corridor, which comprises Phase Two. Could I ask you to please correct this ish, this and your next issue? We certainly don't want Wheatridge residents to think we have removed the Ward Road Station from this long-planned transit project just as it's starting construction. So I just wanted, Mrs. Sign, Kevin Flynn, the Public Information Officer for RTD Fast Tracks, so I just wanted to make, clarify that that article was not correct, and RTD is planning, and still to build our Ward Road Station, which we're still in the midst of planning for transit-oriented development and other wonderful things around that. Thank you.
Thank you for that correction. Councilmembers Demott?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Saturday was indeed an incredible event for our Parks Department. Special thanks should go out to Joyce Manwaring for all her hard work on our grant writing that was enabling us to open that park. It was truly well-received by the community. Our community in District Three, Michael spoke that day, and they are very, very thrilled to have that. There are some areas on the west side of Kipling that are concerned about access to that park and safety issues, so I'm sure that will come up as far as being able to cross there at 38th and, and Kipling, so we'll look at that next. Thanks.
Thanks. Councilmember Jay?
I too would like to thank Joyce Manwaring for the tremendous amount of work she did creating, getting grants for that park. It was a great celebration, I was glad I was there.
Thank you. Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd just like to thank our school, Prospect Valley. They did an international Walk to School Day on October the 6th, and well over half of our registered students participated in this year's Walk to School Day. That was 155 kids that participated, which is a great turnout. It was a little chilly, but everyone was very happy, and I'd also like to thank Wheatridge Cyclone, because they donated some prizes, so I think that might have helped get some of those kids out. There's some pretty cool prizes. And then also want to just make a comment about the park. I think it's fabulous, I'm glad it's open, and every day I come down Kipling from school, there are lots of kids already playing on it, so I think it's, it's a great place for us to have. Oh, and the fire department, thank you. Woo, thank you. And I'd also like to thank Wheatridge Fire Department, because they had a wonderful truck there and a crew of four who helped greet the kids as they crossed over into the school, and helped them fill out their little cards for the prizes. So, thank you, Chief Gillespie, as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Reinhardt?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Stites?
Oh, yeah. I had this distinct honor and pleasure this weekend of doing two things. Friday night, I had a very honor doing a ribbon cutting at my son and my daughter-in-law's new business in Wheatridge, so that was kind of exciting, or kind of, it was exciting. And then Saturday morning, we had a dedication for the park, absolutely fantastic. You get a chance to go out there. In fact, I went by Sunday and then today, and it's really being utilized already. There's a lot of cars there, and a lot of kids, and hopefully we'll get Phase Three going, and, you know, have it done, but it's absolute great thing for Wheatridge, District Three, and, and the neighborhood there. As always, this is a great time to relocate your business and/or home to Wheatridge. If you need any help, check with one of us or city staff. Please try to do a positive thing in your neighborhood, your family, and as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheatridge. Thank you.
Thank you. We will be adjourning into a study session. City clerk asked for about 10 minutes to get set up with the equipment, so we will adjourn back for the study session around 10 till 8. So we're adjourned.[1643.98][1643.98](APPLAUSE).[1644.98]